All right. Welcome, everyone. Before we call the meeting to order, I'm going to turn it over to staff for Chloe to give a couple of comments about how to join tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello and welcome to the special city council meeting. In accordance with the current Santa Cruz County Health Order and the Governor's Executive Order N 2920, this meeting is not physically open to the public. Council and staff are meeting via Zoom, and there are several ways for the public to watch and participate. As always, this meeting is Cablecast Live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and will be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. and on Saturday, following the first rebroadcast, at 1:00 p.m. on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Our technician tonight is Kingston Rivera. Thank you, Kingston. If you are watching our community on Community TV and would instead prefer to join the Zoom webinar, please visit the City of Capitola homepage and click on City Council Meeting under Upcoming Events, as you see on the screen. As a webinar attendee, your microphone is muted for the entire meeting unless you request to be unmuted during the public comment period. You do not need a microphone, camera, screen, or computer. If you only want to listen to the meeting, the meeting is accessible by landline or mobile phone. To join the webinar using a telephone only, dial any of the following numbers shown on the screen. The webinar ID is also provided. Remember that the mayor will announce the public comment period. There are several ways to make a comment. If you are a Zoom webinar attendee, simply click Raise Your Hand and wait to be unmuted by the moderator. If you've called into Zoom over the phone, dial *9 to raise your hand and wait to be unmuted. To email a comment, send your email to the address shown on the screen. One comment verbally or by email per person is allowed. If you send more than one email about the same item, the last received will be read or displayed. Comments received outside the public comment period will not be included in the record. Thank you for attending the meeting. And Mayor Peterson, thank you. I'll turn this over to you.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, we're going to call tonight's meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Bertrand.
Hi.
Councilmember Botorff.
Here.
Councilmember Story.
Here.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional materials for tonight's meeting?
We do not have any additional materials.
Great, thank you. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There are no additions or deletions to the agenda this evening.
Great, thank you. We're going to move on to city council and staff comments. We'll start with staff. Are there any staff members that have comments this evening?
No comments.
Great, thank you. Then we'll go to council members. Any council members that have any comments? Go ahead and use the Raise Hand feature. Councilmember Story.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report out from our last Arts Commission meeting and just let everyone know that the Arts Commission did officially take action to cancel next end of October's Pen Air Artists event that we normally hold in Capitola. So I'd just say look to that to come back in 2021. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Any additional council comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to general government public hearing. Tonight's only item on the agenda is to continue discussion of zoning code items. So I will turn it over to staff for a staff report.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Peterson and council. I hope you're all doing well. This evening, we are going to be talking about the zoning code update. As you know, we've been working on this for some time and have been working closely with the Coastal Commission staff over the last year. This will likely be our last zoning code update meeting prior to publishing a full update for public review comment period and then adoption hearings. So good news. We're kind of on that final, almost to the final step. So as you know, in 2018, we adopted a new zoning code. It took effect immediately outside of the coastal zone. In all areas inside the coastal zone, the zoning code does not take effect until it has been certified by the California Coastal Commission. Where we are in the process currently, the city council adopted the code. The Coastal Commission provided us red lines. That was in November of 2018. In March of 2019, the Planning Commission provided a recommendation on the Coastal Commission red lines. And since that time, we've been working diligently with the Coastal Commission at the direction of city council to find common ground. And the current step is for city council review and recommendation. Following this step, we'll be publishing a final draft for adoption hearings. We'll put that out for public review and come back to the Planning Commission for a recommendation and then city council for adoption. Following city council adoption, we will put together a packet for the California Coastal Commission. We'll submit the zoning code update, which is referred to your local coastal program implementation plan, to the Coastal Commission for adoption. It will get scheduled for a hearing. And what I'm hearing from the Coastal Commission is that because they've done so much work on this upfront, they expect to get us scheduled for a hearing within 90 days of acceptance. If it is approved, then it would be certified. They have provided us with all the red lines that they expect to provide during our submittal process. So if we were to have accepted all of their red lines, we would have almost been guaranteed a certified approval. At this point, we're just going through some of the items that they had given back to us in trying to find common ground. So when we do submit, they could approve the, if they approve, they'll either approve it and certify it or approve it contingent to us adopting their red lines. So if we accept the red lines that they provide, it becomes certified. If we choose not to adopt their red lines but propose new revisions, we would start over. We would have a public hearings and then we would submit it back to the Coastal Commission for their review and see if we can get to that place of approval and certification. If we didn't accept their red lines and we chose not to take any further action, then we would, the submittal would lapse and we would have two separate codes. Before I continue, any questions on the process? Seeing none, I'll move forward.
Katie?
Yes?
I just want to let you know that your presentation isn't on Zoom. It's your camera.
Sorry about that. Can you see this?
Yeah.
Hold on. Can you see the screen with the adoption and certification process?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. So any questions on the certification process? Seeing no hands, we'll move forward. So the, hmm. There we go. So our first topic tonight is the Monarch Cove Inn. Yes?
I think Councilmember Story has his hand up. Councilmember Story, you're still on mute. There we go.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Sorry about that. I just wanted to disclose that I have a property interest within 500 feet of this project. So I'm going to recuse myself and step out virtually. I'll come back when you're done with this item.
Okay. And I should clarify that we're going to review three topics tonight. And at the end of each topic, I'll be asking for direction before we move on to the next topic. Okay. Okay, so with that, so we'll talk about the Monarch Cove Inn. The Monarch Cove Inn is located on Depot Hill at the very end of Escalona Drive and El Salto Drive. And historically, this property, at first, it was utilized as a single-family home and then it was modified to a bed and breakfast, in which the current owner has lived and worked at for many decades and run. And this zoning code update change was due to the, the current owner would like to retire and no longer operate the bed and breakfast as a bed and breakfast, but would like to operate it as a single-family home. Within our land use plan, which sets the long-term, the long-range planning goals within your coastal areas, this property is identified and within the maps, it's identified with the pedestrian and bicycle accesses to and along the shoreline. The property is identified as a viewpoint, as having a view, and then it talks about the other pedestrian accesses along the bluff. Currently, how this property is utilized, there's on the parcel that's labeled number one, there's an office with a carport and a one-bedroom cottage. The parcel number two, which is right-of-way that was dedicated to the owners, has a two-bedroom cottage. And then the bed and breakfast sits on parcel three, which is an 11-bedroom bed and breakfast. Under the existing zoning code, the requirement for this property is that residential uses by the owners and their family members, the current standard to do residential use requires that the owner and their family members of up to one unit per parcel can be used as residential on the three parcels, as long as a minimum of six guest bedrooms are available for visitors serving uses within the three parcels. So that's the current standard. So it requires a little less than half of the bedrooms on site to always be utilized as nightly rental for visitor-serving. Within our 2018 adopted code, we moved forward with a zoning change on this property. Zoning it before, it was visitor-serving. We changed it to visitor-serving overlay with a R1 single-family zoning as the base zone. And within the land use table, we, the first draft was that single-family dwellings require a conditional use permit and shall comply with all the standards of the R1 district. When we submitted this to the Coastal Commission staff, they changed our note within the land use table and said, "Single-family dwelling is only allowed if ancillary to visitor accommodating uses." So that would say it has to be secondary to visitor accommodating uses. So within that, we would, it would suggest that probably seven of the rooms would have to be utilized as visitor accommodations. And the Planning Commission, when they reviewed this last year, they added, they modified the note to say that single-family dwellings, you know, it requires a conditional use permit, but it would be allowed in conjunction with visitor accommodation uses, use, or a grant of a public access to a viewpoint. So in looking at this, the, actually, I'm going to first bring you to, we did receive a proposal that was in your packet from the owners of the Monarch Cove Inn. I just want to let you know that what you're seeing tonight, if, if a single-family use were to come forward and this note were to exist in the future code, all details of a proposed viewpoint would be worked out then. It would not be worked out during the zoning code update. It's just stating that the way it's drafted is that a viewpoint would be provided by the owner. So the Planning Commission and city council in reviewing, the Planning Commission, I guess, in reviewing their conditional use permit would take a really thorough look at this. But this is actually a good practice just so, to get the vision of what a viewpoint could be in the future. So on the left-hand side of the slide, you're seeing a photo of the existing pathway, and that is within, it's a piece of land, not, it was dedicated to the city, but we never accepted the dedication. So it's still owned by the original map, the person that originally owned the property, and it goes way back to 1888. However, the parcel that's outlined in red is owned by the Blodgett family that owns the Depot, I'm sorry, the Monarch Cove Inn. And they're showing on there a corner in which they would propose the viewpoint dedication. So the pathway would lead to the dedication. And here, they've provided a photo of where that view is and a site plan. And then just a conceptual picture of what that could look like when spruced up with some benches. So with that, staff is recommending that the council provide direction on requirements for the single-family use of the Monarch Cove Inn. Specifically, does the council support the Planning Commission recommendation to allow an alternative to visitor accommodations through a grant of public access to a viewpoint? Also, are there other visitor-serving uses the city should propose to Coastal Commission as a compromise to allow a single-family? With that, I'll take any council questions prior to going into public hearing.
Great, thank you. I see Councilmember Bertrand has his hand up.
So in terms of the right-of-way, that's not quite certain yet. If, if it was determined that we didn't have access to that right-of-way and there was a public viewing place, then we'd have to go across the Blodgett's land. Could that be arranged in some sort of agreement in the future?
The way that the condition is written in, it could be arranged in the future if that access were not available. My understanding, though, is the existing access just hasn't been accepted by the city at this point, but it has been offered.
Okay, so even that offering was so long ago, we can still accept it? But who are we going to accept it from? That's an issue.
So we would need to work out all those logistics at the time of the review of the application. But if not, if that were not still being, my understanding is the offer still stands from the prior review of the proposed hotel expansion on the site.
In terms of the wording of the proposed proposal from city planning, could we also request that there be an Airbnb offering on each side?
Yeah, you could. The council could give direction tonight for other visitor-serving uses or other items that they'd like to see incorporated into those conditions.
Okay. So there's three units. Could we, could we request the main building to stay visitor-serving and the other two could go to a single-family? Is that a possibility?
You could propose that tonight, yes.
Okay, so we could, the Blodgits could have access to single-family, do what they want to, two of them, and the historic Monarch Cove could stay as a visitor-serving and potentially could also get the viewpoint. Those are possibilities.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Botorff also, it looks like, has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I kind of got close to the questions I was going to ask, but specifically, Katie, I kind of didn't get a clear answer on, are we going to move forward with acquiring that piece of property or is that something that was predicated on something else happening? I didn't get a formal answer that we're going to accept. How are we going to accept that dedicated property?
So in speaking with the Public Works Director about this, my understanding is that the last time our legal staff, which was the previous legal staff, reviewed this offer of dedication, that the offer still stands because there hasn't been a quiet title that has been exchanged for this property. We would have to work very closely with our city attorney to accept that offer of dedication and make it city property. And then we would just, within our acceptance, we would be accepting the area of the dedication that is for the trail. Typically, you accept the improvements, is my understanding. So all the steps that are required within that, we would make sure that would happen if they were to come in with a proposal for a single-family home. If it were something that the city council wanted to look at separately than the zoning code, that is something that we could talk about separately of the zoning code. But within what we're proposing for the zoning code, if an, if an application were to come in for the R1, we would move forward. If they came in with an application for a residential, with looking at that, accepting that offer of dedication.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Brooks.
Hi, yes. Katie, I think I'll, I'll need you to not elaborate, but be a little bit more clear about that answer that you gave Councilmember Botorff, if it's a two-part process where we need to include some language in this for first and then we follow up on it. And then my second question is, I couldn't, I didn't really hear if there were any other viewpoints other than that particular area you showed on the map, so as presented. So those are my two questions.
Okay. So I'll try to be more clear on that. So for an offer, my understanding is that there was an offer of dedication for, I'm going to pull, show the map. So where the existing pathway is here, there was previously an offer of dedication to the city, and that goes back to when the original map for this area of Depot Hill was created. It's still owned by the original owner, which we would have to go back and do title searches and find out exactly who has rights to it at this point. But because the offer was made and not accepted, and also because nobody else has taken ownership of it, the offer still stands and the city has the ability to accept that offer. In terms of the proposed, is that clear? So that can happen within a future application for a residential. If the Planning Commission wanted the viewpoint to be accessed through that pathway, that could be done during that review of a single-family home on that parcel or that modification from bed and breakfast to single-family use. It could also be done separately should the city council choose to, to want to own that piece of property, where the dedicate, the offer still stands, is my understanding. Your second question was, is that the location of the viewpoint dedication or are there other proposed viewpoints? At this point, this is just, this is a viewpoint that the owners of the inn are, have identified. They worked with an architect and they thought this was the best place to have it on the site and I, because it's leading from that existing pathway to this area. So it's what they've proposed. If a future application came in, the Planning Commission at the time of reviewing the conditional use permit for the residential use could, could, they would evaluate the viewpoint and whether or not that's adequate or if there's a different area that they would want the viewpoint. So, and just to be more clear on Councilmember Bertrand's question, if, if the existing pathway were not the pathway that the Planning Commission chose, but they say wanted a different pathway to a different area of a viewpoint, that would be considered during the Planning Commission conditional use permit as well? Is that clear?
Yeah, so I guess my follow-up question, would it be in our best interest to, to examine or possibly say in the language that, instead, because I think it says one viewpoint in Planning Commission's proposal? Do you want to go back? Oh, I'm blocking it. Allow, or grant of public access to a viewpoint? I don't know if it would be necessary then to edit, instead of to A, to several, I don't, I mean, it sounds like there's just so many options out there and I wouldn't want to put it in the mind, yeah.
Yeah, you could make a, a change to, to one or more viewpoints if you felt that that's something you'd like in the language this evening.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I see that Councilmember Bertrand and Councilmember Botorff both have their hands up. Are these new questions or old? Okay, let's start with Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, so based on your presentation, Katie, I get the impression that on our own, the City of Capitola could request from the owner that access, which includes the viewpoint, the potential viewpoint, and the city could acquire it on its own. Is that correct?
No, on our own, we could acquire the access, but not the viewpoint. The viewpoint is on the property, the Monarch Cove Inn property.
Okay, I thought it's just the follow-through of that original access street.
No, so this, the red outlined parcel is owned by the Monarch Cove Inn. The portion owned by the, by the subdivider of Depot Hill originally is this parcel out here that has, we've never accepted the dedication.
Okay, so then the, the inn, whatever the history of the inn is, because it goes back quite a distance, they acquired that extension, the end of that extension.
Correct. I think that was part of the Grand Avenue.
Right, so they actually acquired that. So there must be some deed record of that acquisition. Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Any additional questions from council? Seeing none. Katie, so are we bringing it to public comment for each item within this agenda item or one public comment period?
Public comment per item.
Per item, okay. All right, so we're now going to open this up to public comment. And do we have our moderator that's going to keep track of that and open that up for public comment?
Yes, hi. I'm checking right now.
Great.
We've got Planner Sean Sisanto this evening. And I should also mention, we have Ben Noble with us this evening, who has been the author of the zoning code update and also is available for any questions.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay. The public comment period is now open. We'll be taking verbal comments first. Please raise your hands or dial *9 if you would like to speak. The timer will be set to three minutes. I'm checking our attendees through Zoom, and I do see one hand raised. It is the Monarch Cove Inn on this, so I'm going to go ahead and, all right, so you've been unmuted, but you will have to, there we go.
Okay. Am I off-mute?
Yes.
Great. Okay, should I start talking and let me know when?
Go ahead.
I'm Juan Blodgett, and I'm sitting next to my husband, Robert, and Bob, we call him. And we came forth today to help move this forward. So first of all, thank you, Mayor and city council, for taking this on your lap, and we really appreciate what you're doing. And we would like to thank you for the opportunity to present our solution to the proposal given by the Capitola Planning Commission, which will reestablish our original zoning back to R1 slash visitor-serving. In 2014, we put together an expansion project called the Monarch Cove Inn Hotel Project, and the residents of Depot Hill did not support our effort. It was very clear during that time what our neighbors did, did not want this expansion. This inability to expand, though, created a real hardship in that it created an endless cycle of being caretakers for a property that demands a very high maintenance profile while not having enough rooms to financially support that demand. Bob and I, respectively, are 72 and 77, and we must soon retire. We suffer from serious health issues and we will have to close the inn. It is our heartfelt desire to once again use our property to enjoy as a residence for ourselves and our family, as it has been historically for over 60 years. We strongly feel that the goals of the California Coastal Commission in maintaining public access to our coastline is an important issue for now and in the future. But to impose a visitor-serving zoning surrounded by single-family residences creates many potential issues. This is a zoning issue that we've struggled with since its inception in 2004. We now feel that the Capitola Planning Commission has come to a solution to this dilemma. It addresses giving public access to maintain the obligations to the Coastal Commission. In fact, this solution In fact, this solution absolves the issue completely. It allows public access to the viewing of the coastline with a dedicated parcel. We will dedicate a parcel to the public as a view overlook. In our dedication of this parcel, a beautiful overlook and walking path would be created for visitors and citizens of Capitola for many years to come. We again thank the city for their recognition and support of this proposal and recognize the value of what this solution will provide and the benefits it will be to move this plan forward. And please recognize again that because of our age, because of serious health issues, we do have to retire. We have to close the inn. And we'll be here for questions. Would you like to hear Bob's three minutes at this time or? Hello?
Yes, I think that's acceptable unless staff has any objections. I believe that each individual gets three minutes, so I think he's welcome to, to speak at this time also.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I, Robert Blodgett, am here to elaborate on our proposal for the Escalona overlook. The Escalona overlook proposal will create a dedicated public location for enjoying long views out to Monterey Bay. The overlook will be at the very end of Escalona Drive on Depot Hill and will afford the coastal views from Sea Cliff all the way to Monterey County. The existing Escalona Drive public right-of-way extends toward the coast on its easterly end, but stops before reaching the coastal bluff. I currently own a parcel of land between the end of Escalona Drive and the coastal bluff. While most of this parcel includes inaccessible cliff areas, there's an opportunity to create a public viewpoint safely set back from the cliff. Lana and I want to explore dedicating a portion of this lot for a public coastal access area and viewpoint. We will develop the viewpoint area, install benches, and manage the upkeep of the overlook similar to the illustration. This remarkable location will allow the public to enjoy the dramatic views it provides. This location for public access will provide the sweeping views sought by the coastal commission staff during the ongoing discussions of visitor-serving zoning for the Monarch Cove properties. Appropriate signage at the easterly end of pathway on Escalona Drive will put direct pedestrian visitors along the existing path leading to the overlook location. Creating this new public access to coastal views will provide the opportunity to protect coastal access as sought by the coastal commission and at the same time, provide the residential zoning for our property at the end of El Salto Drive. You can answer questions if you like.
Great, thank you so much. Do we have any additional public comment, either via Zoom or via email?
Not see any further attendees with their hands raised. And there are no written comments.
Okay, great. So we will close our public comment at this time and bring it back to council for discussion and a motion. I see Councilmember Betron has his hand up.
Oh, thank you, mayor. I did have a question for the Blodgits, if I may.
Absolutely.
Thanks. So Bob, you suggested, and I should disclose, I did meet with them earlier, that you would like to move to one of the three houses in your retirement stage in life, which I'm in also, so I respect that. Which one would you want to move in? There's the, the main house, which is, you know, the main portion of the Monarch Cove Inn, then the other two.
The main house, that's where I lived when I was going to Gabriel College and that's where I spent a lot of time, the main house. The other houses I would have our children live in.
Okay, what do you think of the idea of having some portion, maybe at least one room, given to an Airbnb offering to the public?
That would be all right. Not a room, but a, a, maybe a structure, a separate structure.
Separate structure.
Another cottage, you know, a little cottage, that would be better.
Yeah, you do have some cottages, I think on property one and property two, you have cottages? Is that correct?
Yes, yes. The property, yes, the property, property one, there's a small cottage and that could remain for Airbnb and then another house could be built on that parcel. And then the center one, which is actually at the end of El Salto Drive, that's kind of a, a problem for building another little structure there because it is in the road. But there's obviously lots of room for a little structure on the, the opposite side. Yeah, and especially where the, the big Victorian is. We could easily put another little house over there for Airbnb. It'd be, it wouldn't cause any problems whatsoever.
So.
We just don't want to run the business anymore.
Right.
Got it. So mayor, I just want to follow that. So, you know, there is an historic nature up there, which I'm sure some of the Blodgits are well aware of. And in consideration of the coastal commissions need to have coastal access. So I'd like to ask you, Bob, again, and your wife, would having a, a structure or two to continue that and also the outlook meet with your plans in retirement?
I would, I would think so.
Yeah, we would, we would, we could do that. We would prefer just the outlook.
The outlook.
But yes, we would do it. We basically want to live on the property as our houses legally as, as our residences.
With our family.
With our family and having those extra little rooms, it's income, but it's not running the inn. We don't have employees, we don't have the same pressure. We, you know, I'm the one that started the Monarch Cove Inn and I love the concept, but, you know, I found out that I'm not going to live forever, so we just can't do this. And there was a lot of time, a lot of times when we, the, the business was losing money and we supported the property with other income from other businesses for years. And we're now breaking even now, but that's not, you know, that's, that's not good enough. So anyway, we, we, we really, it's our health, it's really the problem. You know, it's just, it's just not going to work out. We, Lana's got ten stints in her heart and summary, so I'm sorry. That's the way it is.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Councilmember Betron, for your comment. I, I'd like to share, I have some concerns with requiring or mandating that they move forward with Airbnb if that's not something that they're comfortable with or something that they want to do. It, it seems slightly concerning that we have lots of Airbnbs in town, but we would never require any of those individuals to maintain an Airbnb if they didn't want to or to run a business when they were ready to retire. So I just want to share that I do have some concerns with a mandate for them to, to maintain one of their structures for an Airbnb. I'm, I don't have a problem with the council highly encouraging it, but as, for it to be part of a motion and a vote to mandate that, that these individuals maintain an Airbnb, I, I do have concerns with that. So I do want to share that with the council and continue the discussion if any council members have any additional comments.
Mayor Peterson?
And I'm not seeing any council members with additional con, oh, just kidding. Vice Mayor Brooks, and then after that, we'll go to Councilmember Botor.
Sorry, Katie, can you go back to the language again? I just want to have it up on the screen. Because I, I have the same feelings. I, I, not that it's a terrible idea to suggest that they, they continue having an Airbnb, but I just want the language to be flexible for so many different reasons. And I just want to circle back just to see, in conjunction with visitor accommodations or grant of public access. So, Councilmember Betron, were you saying to add language in there? What was your suggestion there? I need some clarification.
Well, I would like to add something in there so that there could be an option for them to develop an Airbnb or an ADU of some sort so the visitor serving could be still accommodated. I wouldn't force them to do it, it's just an option they could take advantage of. And like on option, excuse me, on parcel number one, that's going to be one of the children's possessions, I believe, at some point. And so they could take up that option. So I wouldn't want to force anyone to do anything, but in the spirit of visitor accommodating, I'm trying to do something so the coastal commission will go along with this. It's been a hotel, I mean, a visitor-serving facility for a long time. There's a lot of history, goes way back before the Blodgits. There's cabins up there, very famous people have been there as guests for a long time. So I, I could see that because of the history, the coastal commission wants to keep this visitor-serving on some level. The viewpoint is very beautiful, but it doesn't give the visitor serving in the same way it did in the past. I've gone out there many times and sat in with the ocean with my wife. I totally liked the place. And the improvements that the Blodgits would like to do, I think, would greatly add to it. I've talked to neighbors about it, they kind of like it to be a hidden gem. Stains and stuff like that may not be to their liking, but if it's public use, then we have to do something like that. So to summarize, I'd like to have the option for them to do that. An Airbnb only is in one area of the city, so we'd have to do something to set this aside. If the owners of the property as it moves forward want to do that, then they would have that option. So I don't want to force them to do it, but I want to let the coastal commission know that we will provide some, a, a way to move forward to keep the visitor serving going. So that's my point.
I see, thank you, Councilmember Betron. Katie, is that what the language implies in the Planning Commission's notes there? It says allowed in conjunction with visitor accommodations. Would that cover what Councilmember Betron is suggesting?
So I, I think it would include that. You could get a little more specific and add another sentence following that, that in conjunction with visitor accommodation uses, you could specify visitor accommodations may be created within accessory dwelling units within the same parcel as the single-family use? If you wanted to get a little more specific and allow for a secondary dwelling unit, is that, or?
Well, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if we left it general, they, they could, they would have to do something in that in regard to what Councilmember Betron was suggesting, is that correct?
They could, they could propose.
Okay.
Visitors, yeah, and it's more open to anything they would propose.
Mayor Peterson, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
To, to accept the Planning Commission's suggestions with an amendment that the note 12, single-family dwelling, allowed in conjunction with visitor accommodation use and grant, not or, and grant public access to, to a viewpoint.
I'll circle that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, we'll continue discussion. Councilmember Botor had his hand up. Before I go to you, Councilmember Botor, I just want a quick clarification. It sounds like when we're referring to visitor accommodations, we assume that specifically means hotel or Airbnb. But wouldn't the overlook viewpoint itself be a visitor accommodation? Just to clarify.
No, it would be a viewpoint, but an accommodation would be an overnight stay.
Okay, specifically, okay, thank you. Councilmember Botor.
Uh, thank you. I'm gonna, um, let's see, well, my, my computer was staying unstable, so I've been turning my picture off, but I'm gonna leave it on until I start to freeze. We'll see what happens. Okay, so I'm trying to follow Vice Mayor Brooks's motion. And I guess, Katie, I just want you to explain to me what's the difference between and or? She changed it to or grant, and I don't know what that.
Yeah, so, um, thank you for the question. I would, I would want that both of those things exist on the property. So that an ADU would be part of the property and that that viewpoint access still, with the photo that was presented, still be created. I'm still a little iffy on, and Katie, if we need to agendize for another, for a later date, on whether we need to come back regarding obtaining that, that parcel or whatever you called it, in order to follow through on that viewpoint. So that's why I said and.
Okay, so that would, for the purposes of a future single-family dwelling, that would come forward at the time of review of the application? The, the only reason we would bring it forward separately is if the city council asked for it separate, just because we wanted to acquire the land? But not tied to this application.
Yes, in order to acquire the land, we need to request it as an agendized item, correct?
Correct, and it would be separate from any development application.
Okay, um, and so with my mo, did I answer your question, Councilmember Botor?
Uh, possibly. I'm, I'm gonna ask Katie to clarify it, okay? The way that I'm reading this is the, the, the owners have the option of providing visitor accommodations or granting the viewpoint. And it appeared to me that they are more leaning towards granting the viewpoint, not necessarily providing visitor accommodation. And I don't want to mandate that they have to do both. And that's why I was asking Katie to clarify, we mandating that they must do both? Because what, I would rather give them the option to do it if they desire, but if we put and in there, then I'm reading that they have to do both. And I just wanted you to clarify that, Katie.
That's correct. The Planning Commission put in or as an option to providing onsite visitor accommodations. By changing the or to an and, they would have to do both.
Right, and, and from what I heard the Blodgits say is that, you know, that they want to live there. They don't necessarily want to provide accommodations. I'm sure that if they decided to VRVO or any other type of option, they could do that at their own will. They don't need us to authorize that. But by putting the and in there, here I am again dictating what they have to do. And I'm reading that the reason that they're granting this viewpoint was because that was the way for them to get their property back, retire in peace, and allow coastal access by the word or. And I believe the Planning Commission was going down that path. So I don't want to undo what was, what was been done. I, I'm not comfortable, I'm personally not comfortable with mandating that. I think that the, the, the ability to have any type of overnight stay on that property should be up to their discretion. So I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to be comfortable with the word and in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Botor. I see Ben Noble has his hand up, so we'll go to you next and then we'll come back to you, Councilmember Betron.
Okay, thank you. So depending on how the council goes on this, if, if you do decide to keep open the option for vacation rental, but not to mandate it, what I would suggest is we make sure that it's very clear that vacation rentals is an allowed use. Right now, under lodging, it lists hostels, inns, bed and breakfasts, and hotels as a conditionally allowed use. I would want to make sure that there's no confusion that vacation rentals is also an allowed use on the property. And then the other thing I was going to say is that if the council decides to require vacation rentals on the property, it might be useful to specify if each individual parcel requires a vacation rental unit or if there just needs to be one or two in total on all three properties.
Okay, let's go to Councilmember Betron. I believe you are next with your hand up, and then we'll go to Councilmember Botor.
Um, thank you. Ben, I appreciate your clarification. So my, my main thrust here is to make sure that the coastal commission accepts what the city council of Capitola would like. And I believe their main issue is coastal access in terms of staying overnight and not just to walk up to the view. And so I'd like some clarification on that because if all they care about is the view and that's good enough, then fine. So a nominal one bedroom to one of the houses or two of the houses, and I agree with you, Ben, we'd have to specify, not a hotel or anything like that, but something that's visitor-serving that the Blodgits could. visitor-serving, that the Blochitz could, um, take advantage of in the future, or some future owner could take advantage of. And so, I only bring that up because I want to get this thing through the Coastal Commission. And this is why I asked the Blochitz if this is something they were comfortable with, and there seemed to be agreement to do that. So, um, I don't think they feel they're being forced, they're being offered an option. So, I'd like some clarification, Katie, from you. So, in terms of getting this through Coastal Commission, what is their main objective? Do they care that much about a viewpoint, or are they really still wanting to keep the traditional use of a visitor-serving facility that actually has rooms in all those options that go with it?
So, in, in bringing, you know, we submitted the update, that you can see the second box on the slide, the Coastal Commission would, they were willing to allow a single-family dwelling only if ancillary to visitor accommodating uses. So, in, in reading that, it would have to be secondary to visitor accommodating uses. So, right now, they've got 15 bedrooms on the site. I read that to say that they'd like at least half of those to be utilized as visitor accommodations. It's not, they, they're very clear that they still want a visitor accommodations on the site. If the City Council this evening wanted to utilize the Planning Commission language, but then add something more specific of what those visitor accommodation uses are, it would be, I think it would help in the long run for when this does get, when an application would go before the Planning Commission, to specify, as Ben suggested, that it would be allowed for nightly rental. It would also be helpful to specify if, you know, we heard from the owners tonight say that although not ideal, they could live with a secondary unit onsite that was a nightly rental. Um, to write that in the code is a little, is more helpful if that got adopted by the city, by the Coastal Commission, because then we have it in our code, and it's very clear that the intent was to allow secondary dwellings that could be rented nightly. How it is now, it's kind of open with allowed in conjunction with visitor accommodation use or a grant of public access to a viewpoint. There's a lot of interpretation for the in conjunction with visitor accommodation. So, if you do want to make it a little less strict than what the Coastal Commission staff was recommending, then I would suggest putting stronger language in there that would support that vision. If, if, and just remember, the Coastal Commission staff, their red lines are really what they wanted to see us adopt. So, I think it's very clear what their intent was for visitor accommodations to remain on the site. If we want to better define that, it may be helpful for future applications.
Are they willing to compromise? I mean, the Blochitz would, in a sense, like to get out of the hotel business, but moving partway in the direction of the Coastal Commission, do you think that would be something they might agree to? I mean, you can't read their minds, but, you know, we're, we're trying to provide something if, you know, if the motion gets changed, to recognize them.
Yeah, I, I think if, we have better chances of getting it passed if there's some type of visitor accommodation uses on the site.
Okay. By visitor accommodation, you, you mean overnight lodging, right?
And we would need to better define that as overnight lodging.
So, I didn't make the motion, but, um, is that maybe Ben could offer some wording, or Katie could offer some wording now that might get us a little bit closer to the position the Capitol could take that would meet the city, excuse me, the Coastal Commission's needs and desires.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Bertrand. Um, yeah, I, I wouldn't mind, I would be okay with defining the visitor accommodations to reflect overnight lodging, vacation rentals, and if we should go so far as to say, um, at least one. Um, to Katie's point, with the Coastal Commission's note, that they were suggesting that about half maintain, um, be maintained on the property as overnight accommodations. And so, kind of by saying at least one overnight accommodation and the viewpoint access, I think would get us closer to what the Coastal Commission's, um, suggestions or recommendations were, um, and not put so much pressure on the current owners of the property. Also, I'm comfortable with my, my, um, my motion, because we don't, we want to, I feel that I should create, we should create language, not just for those who own it now, but for their children and whoever owns it in the future. And so, by opening these two things up, would allow them, we wouldn't be saying that they couldn't do anything any longer, should someone want to come back and reopen the historical property aspect of it. So, I'm comfortable with the motion, with adding some language from Mr. Noble and Katie, if, if that's okay with you guys.
It's okay with me. Um, the idea is to craft something that's workable with us, the City Council, and Coastal Commission.
Okay, I believe we still have a motion in a second. Councilmember Botorff, the other hand up?
I do, thank you, Mayor. Katie, um, in, in this entire large document that we're trying to approve, is this the only red line that we have not accepted? Have we, are there any other red lines that exist, and any other ordinances?
There, there are quite a few that we've come to compromise on. We'll see in the final document, because we did make quite a few changes over the last round. So, um, I, I think we're, we're on the same page for the majority of the document. We, but this is one of the, the ones that I wouldn't be surprised that if, if we modified it to not require visitor accommodations, that we might get a red line back on this. But then, if that were to happen, you know, it would come back to the City Council, and you could make the decision whether or not to accept the red line and have the code adopted, or, uh, work on another round of revisions. But, but there's still multiple changes that we've made.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I, I don't feel that we're doing the owners any favors by forcing them to have visitor accommodations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Botorff. Uh, do we have any additional comments from, or questions from Councilmember? Seeing none, I believe we have a motion, oh, just kidding, my apologies, Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, um, so I think we're on a timeline here to some extent, so I'd, I'd like to get a better idea of, of Katie. If we had to go back and forth on the Monocove, I wonder how much time that could take. And then, there's another question, more to the point, maybe we could get some time to figure this out. Can, can we have a carve-out for Monocove while that gets hashed out, and the rest of the city code, if it's adopted by Coastal Commission, go into effect? Is that a possibility?
At this point, I, I wouldn't suggest that we have, that chapter is part of a bigger picture for visitor-serving. We created a new visitor-serving overlay. It would just, it would impact the rest of the code dramatically, not to include that chapter at this point. My best advice would be to move forward with something that the City Council is, feels comfortable with, and, um, at, at this point, and then we may possibly get a red line from the Coastal Commission. At that time, you'll make a decision of whether or not to accept it, or to go back through the process, which would require going to, you know, public hearing at Planning Commission with a recommendation, and City Council, so.
Well, Madam Mayor, if I could make one more comment. Um, I remember when this first came before the City Council, I think, Katie, you were pretty clear that the Coastal Commission wanted to retain this as coastal, as visitor-serving in the terms of a, of a hotel, motel, Monaco, that's what it's called right now. So, I think they've been pretty adamant since the beginning, and since the beginning of this discussion, you've been relaying that position to us very clearly. So, I think that we need to offer something that allows for a compromise to the Coastal Commission, something that clearly from the comments from the Blochitz, Bob in particular, they're willing to take a little bit, but not everything. And the little bit is to provide some accommodations to people who would like to rent a home, or an ADU, or, um, you know, something of that sort, but not, not what they've been doing, which they'd like to retire from. So, when it comes to vote, I think we should think in terms of, we would like the Coastal Commission to be in a position to agree with us, and we'd like to be in a position so that the code can move forward. There's a lot of issues that aren't being covered the way the City Council would like to have it covered, because the Coastal Commission has not approved of what we've approved some time ago. We've had these hangups, and we need to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand. I see Ben Noble has his hand up.
There's just a couple of things for the council to consider. Um, I would be very surprised if the Coastal Commission doesn't require additional revisions to the zoning code overall, um, in addition to this issue. So, I, I think, I think based on my experience, you can, you can expect a conditional certification that will require you to make additional changes to the zoning code, and this may, may just be one of many. Um, the other thing to consider is that there's a difference between Coastal Commission staff and the Coastal Commission itself. Sometimes the, the commission takes a different perspective or position from staff. So, it, it might, it might be preferable to move forward with the city's preference on this particular issue, even if staff has a different perspective, and wait to see what the Coastal Commission does, um, when it comes before them.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks. Looks like you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just have one question about Airbnb's, or Katie, um, when we say overnight accommodations, is that even, is it even required that there's language in our zoning code that, around that? Like, do we even need to have that language? So, should they, in the future, want to have an Airbnb on one of their properties, do we need that sort of language in the zoning code?
We do for this property. So, our vacation rental zone is specifically in our, um, in our village, and so if we wanted to allow vacation rentals, which is defined as 30 days or less on this site, we would want to specifically call that out.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll go ahead, if Mayor Peterson may, can I call to question?
Sure.
We can go, thank you.
Let's, uh, let's go ahead, and we have a motion in a second, and Vice Mayor Brooks has called the question, so let's have a roll call vote, please.
Could, could we get clarification on the, if the original motion was amended to include vacation rental in there, as well as, uh, there was mention of possibly requiring just one of the three units to be utilized as vacation rental?
Is that question for me, or for Chloe?
Um, for you.
Okay.
Or Vice Mayor Brooks.
Um, so, single-family dwelling allowed in conjunction with overnight lodging and visitor accommodation, um, I should say with at least one overnight lodging and visitor accommodation. Ben, I'm gonna help, use your help if you want to jump in. Is that cover what we were discussing?
Yeah, I think with at least one of the three structures.
Correct.
And I think instead of...
Are we sure?
Instead of overnight lodging, should it be vacation rental, Ben?
So, my, my understanding of the discussion is to require, um, one overnight lodging unit on the property, not necessarily that an existing structure needs to be converted into overnight lodging, but that if the, if the property owner wanted to construct another accessory, um, building, for example, and then rent that out as overnight accommodation, uh, that would be okay. But we wouldn't, we would not be requiring one of the three, um, buildings to be utilized as overnight accommodation.
And the overlooked.
Right. Katie, did you get that piece of it?
I did.
So, okay, so, allowed in conjunction with at least one overnight accommodation on the property, and grant, uh, public access to a viewpoint on the property.
Okay, so, staff has the motion. We have a motion in a second, and it's been called to question. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember Bertrand.
Aye.
Councilmember Botorff.
Aye.
Councilmember Storey, uh, excuse me, Councilmember Story is recused. Vice Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson.
No. So, motion dies, uh, or, or motion fails to pass, I suppose would be the appropriate language. Uh, so, it returns to council. Uh, Councilmember Botorff, you have your hand up.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I think, uh, I appreciate the motion and the intent. I think what's, uh, what's important here is, is as Ben pointed out, this is not the only item that we object to. I don't particularly like that the Coastal Commission's demand stuff from us, and what's being happened here is this is, as Ben mentioned, Coastal Commission staff, not necessarily the commission, who ultimately makes the final decision. Um, I don't feel comfortable with the language. I feel comfortable with what the Planning Commission spent a lot of time coming up with. It may not be what the Coastal Commission staff wanted, but as Ben mentioned, this is not the only item that we have red lines on. So, I would like to make a motion that we approve what is printed, uh, the recommended action as printed, uh, and pass this, and return this back to the Coastal Commission.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it for a discussion.
Okay, we have a second to take a discussion. Um, I have a question. Uh, Katie and Ed afterwards, please let me know if you feel comfortable with this. Katie, would it make sense to keep the Planning Commission language, and then add a sentence that says, um, that essentially that visitor accommodations are allowed on this property at any time, but not required? So, would it make sense to say that single-family dwelling allowed only, uh, in conjunction with visitor accommodation use or grant of public access to a viewpoint, but visitor, visitor accommodation use is always allowed on this property? Should they decide to, to ever utilize that option?
So, I believe in the land use table that visitor accommodations are allowed, um, so that, that's already set up within the visitor-serving overlay. There's, is, does that make, is that clear? So, within...
No, because I, we were, we were talking earlier about would the property owners have the right to do something like an Airbnb? And we were, uh, if I, if I heard correctly, the answer was no, because the, um, that, that is specifically to the village. So, I'm just trying to find a way that we can put it in the wording that they need to, you know, the, the public access to the viewpoint is essentially required, um, and that they can have their single-family dwelling as long as they provide that access to a viewpoint, but if at any point they decide they want to do an Airbnb, or a visitor accommodation of some other sort, that that is their right to do so, so that they don't have to come back and have a whole other conversation with us about the TOT overlay, essentially.
Okay, so, to clarify, visitor accommodations has a separate definition than nightly rental. So, one thing you, the City Council from the conversation, from what I'm hearing, we may want to change from the Planning Commission recommendation, the term visitor accommodations.
You throw it out.
Oh, okay. Um, so, within the Planning Commission recommendation, they utilize the term visitor accommodations. And I'm gonna look to Ben, but I believe Ben was clarifying earlier that visitor accommodations is defined as a hotel, uh, um, use, and there's a separate term within, and there were a couple other things that fit under there, maybe motel, um, but a separate term that's used in the zoning code, which we keep referring to as our vacation rental. So, if we want this to be utilized as an Airbnb vacation rental, um, I would suggest changing the terminology for visitor accommodations to vacation rental. I would suggest changing the terminology for visitor accommodations to vacation rental. And then Mayor Peterson, your comment, if, if we had a sentence after that that said vacation rental, maybe, you know, it would actually, by saying allowed in conjunction with vacation rental, we could add vacation rental to the land use table as an allowed use. That would be the appropriate place to put that. And Ben, I'm going to look to you for, if you're in agreement that changing the term visitor accommodations is in, is aligned with this conversation.
So, so what I would suggest is changing visitor accommodations to overnight lodging, which is more clear. And then adding to the land use table specifically that vacation rentals is an allowed use would clear up any ambiguity on that, which I think is consistent with what, what this motion is contemplating.
That would allow them the opportunity, but not require they do it, correct?
Right, correct.
Councilmember Botworf, would you be willing to accept a friendly amendment to your motion for that wording, or no?
Yes, as long as the word "or" remains in there, because that gives them the option, okay? And it, and, and I'm fine with the substitution of the term. That totally leaves it up to the property owners to decide how they want to provide overnight accommodation. At least that's what I heard Ben say. I was fine with that explanation.
Great. And Councilmember Bertrand, do you accept that amendment as well as the second one?
Yeah, I, I do have a question, though, and I'd like to get both to some degree. Nonetheless, because I want to get an agreement from the Coastal Commission. Does this wording, if it's accepted, allow for some future owner of the main Monaco building to turn that back into a, an Airbnb of some sort?
Yes.
Okay.
The hotel remains an allowed use.
Right, okay. I just want to make sure. Okay, with that, I accept the amendments, the amendment wording.
Okay, Councilmember Botworf, Councilmember Bertrand, you both have your hands up still. I just want to make sure you don't have any further comments.
Mine's down.
Okay. All right, saying none. Staff, do you understand the, the motion and the second? As it's been, okay.
Yes, thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. So let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Aye.
Councilmember Botworf.
Aye.
Councilmember Storey is recused. Vice Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Great.
Motion carries on endlessly. Thank you. All right, let's invite Councilmember Storey to return. And we will move on to topic number two of the evening, I believe, is village parking. Everyone's favorite topic.
Okay.
And I will hand it over to staff.
Great. Okay, and we have Councilmember Storey is back. Great. Okay, thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're going to discuss village parking. Our, our village, as you all know, is extremely unique. And one of the characteristics that, here's a different place that looks very lively and unique as well. One of the characteristics that makes it unique is all these storefronts that are right up to the sidewalk and minimal curb cuts. Once you start introducing curb cuts, it really changes the experience of the pedestrian walking through your village. So typically, the villages that we've come to love have this setting of storefronts right along the frontage, and the pedestrian feels safe as they walk along the sidewalk, and they're not looking for cars entering. They can just look at the next shop as they're walking along a restaurant. And here, we've got a nice picture of our, our vast sidewalks connected with minimal curb cuts. Back when the zoning code was updated for this section that we're going to talk about, it was actually in our land use plan that's for the coastal area that set the tone for this code amendment stating that minimal curb cuts and talked about having parking that could be required for development, but it had to be located outside of the village, and then there were a few exceptions. When we took this to Planning Commission, so here's the, the existing current standards. These were adopted, I think, back in 1989. And it says that parking must be provided on sites outside of the village area, but within walking distance or a remote shuttle. The exceptions to that was for nonhistoric structures in residential overlays. So with a nonhistoric structure, when you're building a new structure, there's usually an opportunity to put some parking right on site. Then also, the Capitola Theater site and the Mercantile site, and it was clear that driveway cuts should be minimized, the ground floor frontage should be commercial development, and that parking areas or structures should be located on the interior of the site. And that they, you can also make an exception to onsite parking due to FEMA regulations for flood. When we brought our updated code, we had removed the exception for historic structures and the specificity on, well, just the historic structures. When we brought to Coastal Commission staff, they added back in the nonhistoric structures within the residential overlays to allow the exceptions to off-site parking. And then they created greater specificity for the Capitola Theater site, to the point that they, in the red lines you see, it may, may accommodate limited onsite parking to serve ADA, so for disabilities, guests and valet, or similar shuttle system. However, off-site parking is strongly encouraged to the maximum extent possible. For any parking located onsite, driveway cuts shall be minimized, and parking areas will not be located along the street frontage. I want to call attention to that Capitola Theater site and the additional language put in by the Coastal Commission about strongly encourage for off-site parking to the extent feasible. Within our review of a future hotel on that site, we would be looking at a parking study. And one of the findings required is to make sure that whatever development is proposed, that it has minimal impacts to traffic. And that would be looked at through the process of looking at a study, seeing what's proposed, and making sure that the finding is met, that whatever is being proposed for the theater site, that it has a minimal impact to, to traffic on the village. So when, when we saw the Coastal Commission edits, really, one of our main goals in updating our zoning code was to make the language clear and easy to understand. We felt that this revision didn't quite hit it, and the Planning Commission, when we brought it to them, they said, you know, it's still unclear. Please take this to the city council for further discussion and clean it up further. So I don't have a, I have a new recommendation from staff on this one that the Planning Commission has not reviewed. But their suggestion was simply, staff, please make this more easy to understand, that this is more about curb cuts and not everything in between. So we've cleaned it up and gotten a little more specific. We did not add the Coastal Commission recommended changes of strongly encourage to the maximum extent feasible. We feel that will be within the findings of any application that will be reviewed. But we outlined exactly what, what the regulations are. And instead of saying, having an exception just for historic sites, we included the actual residential overlays and where you can have onsite parking, because it's not within our commercial core. And any project that is tied to residential, if it's a historic property, will be reviewed by our architectural historian to make sure that it, it complies and, and the parking is adequately placed. So we've also added a map within the zoning code to show exactly where the curb cuts would be prohibited along the commercial core and where they would be allowed along the Cherry Ave residential area, Riverview, and Cliff Drive. So this is the new language, and and staff is recommending that council provide direction on the requirements for the parking, for parking in the village. I do want to add that the reference to off-site parking is for our In-Lu program, and that is a policy which is separate from the zoning code. And we do not want our, I would recommend that we do not incorporate our In-Lu policy into the zoning code, because then it's subject to LCP updates and Coastal Commission review every time we change, make modifications to it. So tonight, we're not asking for an in-depth conversation on our In-Lu program. We're always happy to bring that back. Right now, our In-Lu program can be utilized for a future village hotel or a smaller hotel. And with that, we will, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Bring it to council for questions. I see that Councilmember Bertrand has his hand up.
Yeah, Katie, I was trying to find out a little bit more from your perspective. What was the problem with encouraging a shuttle system in a town where traffic has always been a problem? And also considering that the input of the people that came to the many means we had on the general plan, one of the issues that brought up a lot of resistance was large parking accommodation on a future hotel on the theater site. And the other thing is the In-Lu program is something, from my understanding, it can be taken advantage of. It's not necessarily, necessarily required the hotel owner would, would do as a way to provide parking. So those are my two questions.
Okay, the option to, under, on the slide, under 1B, the Planning Commission may still allow off-site parking, either within walking distance of the use which it serves, or located on a remote site served by a shuttle. So that, that is still an allowance within this review.
Okay.
So that-
But we're not-
We haven't removed that. So it either has to be within walking distance or within a shuttle system, and it is a great alternative.
But, but we're taking away, I'm sorry, I don't want to stop your comments.
And, okay, so more specifically, you're asking why we didn't accept the Coastal Commission edit saying off-site parking is strongly encouraged to the maximum extent feasible? You're welcome to put that back in. As staff, we have a special section of the code that's for development either at the theater site or at the, the area around the mall for increased, the incentivized areas. And within the Capitola Theater site, there are specific findings, I think there's five findings, one of which is that the proposed development will not have, will protect existing public parking as well as not have a, you know, there has to be findings that it's not impacting the village traffic, you know, it's supposed to mitigate the traffic. So it's, I felt like within the existing findings for that incentivized development, we have to really look closely at what they're proposing in terms of the parking and circulation mix to make findings to support the future project, so that it's not, so that it's mitigated. So whether or not we want to, it felt, it felt too much to add it, add almost this finding and suggestion within this criteria, rather than, that, that of course is something that, when an application comes in, we'll be looking at and what the impacts are for whatever they're proposing in terms of parking.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Bertrand?
I, I miss the strong suggestion that we want to emphasize a shuttle system. I'm already hearing broadcasting from the Swansons that, you know, based on their experience with the public parking now, that any kind of parking on the site for the hotel would be fine. They're already taking that position based on data collected from totally different land use. And they're going to keep pushing this issue. And I believe unless Capitola takes a strong stance in our open suggestion that we have a shuttle system in place early on, we're not going to get something that meets the needs of Capitola residents. And the main impact here is people who come to Capitola, and it's crowded, really crowded, and have cars showing back and forth. It's going to impact that, and the experience of people visiting Capitola is going to be minimized. So I want to suggest that we do suggest strongly that a shuttle system be part of the consideration.
Okay, thank you, Council-
That's my point.
Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand. Just a quick reminder that this is just the time for questions from council. We still need to go to public comment on this item. So does anyone have any additional questions? Now would be the time. Okay, hearing none, or, oh, Vice Mayor Brooks, do you have a question?
Aye, I'm, I'm trying to get that button clicked.
Go over.
On the language, I just want a clear definition, Katie, on intensified uses. Your MUV zoning district, I believe it's on the other slide. Yeah, new development and intensified uses. I was just curious on what you, your intention of that was.
That is whenever you, a new land use. So if you have a retail shop that transfers to, to a restaurant, the intensified use is defined in the code as the increase in parking requirement. So at that point, if the parking requirement is increased, it's considered an intensified use. And therefore, there would have to be, the parking requirement would need to be met. And that's something that the Coastal Commission defines. So they define intensified uses by parking.
Great, thanks, Katie. And Katie, can you talk a little bit into the mic? I'm having trouble hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. So did you hear that the intensified use is based on parking calculations? So if a developer were to go from retail to a restaurant, there would be an intensified use because retail is at one parking space per 240. And I'm just estimating, and a restaurant is one pace, one space per 60 square feet of restaurants. So therefore, there would be an intensification of use, and it's based on the parking requirement for that land use.
Thank you. All right, if there's no additional questions, we will bring this item to public comment. And I will turn it over to our moderator to let us know if there are any public comments, either through Zoom or via email.
Thank you. I do see one hand raised, so I will take that. Jesse Bristow. Hello, good evening. Jesse Bristow with Swenson Builders. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I just wanted to comment on item number two, or number two of the location of parking. With the outlook for potential hotels, right now, there's currently two curb cuts, an entrance and an exit. And I think if we, under our current plan or redesign plan, the main access would be off El Camino Medio. And as part of that, and with the general plan, and even in this, in this red line, it suggests a valet or a shuttle system, so, which we're all about supporting. We just want to emphasize that we do have a kind of drop-off concept on Monterey for a potential valet or a shuttle system. We just want to make sure that this red line wouldn't impose any restrictions on, on a future hotel, especially since we'd be eliminating a curb cut and having an exit and entrance on Camino Medio. So that's the only comment I have at this point for, for this red line. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comment via email?
There have been no public comments via email.
Okay, great. So at this point, we'll close, public comment, bring it back to the council. Katie, can you speak briefly to the question that was just asked? Would the redlining of, of the Coastal Commission redline prohibit a drop-off or pickup valet service or shuttle service?
I think the Coastal Commission redlines would support that for coast, for a drop-off or pickup. And the, the revised, I'm going to go back to that slide for you. Under B, for the Capitola Theater Site and Mercantile Site, if driveway cuts are minimized to the extent possible, so it gives some flexibility there, and parking areas are generally located on the interior of the site. So Planning Commission, in reviewing the hotel site, wanted to maintain a lot of flexibility in the standards. That was clear from our discussion on hotel height, which is next, but just keeping it flexible for a future developer to bring in the best design.
Great, thank you.
But I don't think it-
I see Vice Mayor, sorry, go ahead, Katie.
It, it doesn't stand in the way of, it, it keeps it flexible for drop-offs and valet.
Vice Mayor Brooks, did you have your hand up? No? Okay, my apologies. Are there any additional comments or questions from council? Councilmember Botor, if I see your hand up.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I, I like this section. I think it's written very well. I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve staff, staff recommendation with one small modification in item B, as on the screen that's being displayed, where it says the Planning Commission may permit off-site parking for non-residential uses. I would like that to be rewritten to residential and non-residential.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mayor, I'll second the motion with the amended language.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second with amend, amendments to the language on the screen here. Councilmember Story, did you have any additional comments?
Well, I, I would like to follow up, maybe just to convey to the full council and the audience my reason for supporting the motion. You know, I, I'm not sure if it uses the best language. Some of the wording is rather generalized and, and vague, such as to the extent possible and, and on the interior of the site. However, I view this provision as really placing the discretion and authority on the part of the Planning Commission. And it gives them a wide, I think, flexible path to work with any developer to come up with whatever the appropriate solutions may be for Capitola in the future. And, you know, maybe that is a combination of onsite parking, maybe that's valet parking, maybe that's off-site parking. And I'm confident that the Planning Commission can work out the right issues for Capitola at the time, taking all the factors into consideration, and, and, you know, and working with the developer, the board, I think, projects that's bound to be, I think, overall beneficial to the city. So those are the reasons why I seconded the motion and will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Story. Councilmember Bertrand, do you have your hand up also?
No, I, I believe that the staff that came up with this recommendation did craft something that is very easy to understand and maybe now it's vague as the earlier. But I don't think it reflects strongly what city residents have expressed many times in the past about how we need to control traffic in Capitola Village. And with the possibility of a hotel at this point with 76 or so rooms and the cars and traffic that come with that, including onloading and such for just the maintenance of the place, is a little bit much. And this, this does not really address what the city of Capitola residents have said, starting with the city planning, excuse me, with the general plan process and moving forward. So I'm not going to vote for it.
Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand. Are there any additional comments or questions from council? Vice Mayor Brooks?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, reading this, I, I agree with Councilmember Story that the, the language is very broad and that it allows the Planning Commission to go in, in any direction necessary. I feel that there's, you know, the truth is that there's just, we just have a parking problem and a circulation problem down in the village. And it is a hard issue to resolve. And with the land, this, this possibility of adding more parking, just so that we can have a process in place that, that will allow for, for many people to talk about and brainstorm through, this allows for that process to take place. So I'll go ahead and, I, I'm in, in agreement with the motion on the table.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Brooks. Let's see, I'll give it a second just to see if there's any additional council comments. Oh, Katie, did you have?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. I think this would be in line with the, the motion that's on the table, but under B, I think we should strike for non-residential use, and therefore, it would include both residential and commercial and be in line with Councilmember Botor's motion. But rather than say that they're both allowed, we just strike for non-residential use.
Councilmember Botor, how do you feel about that idea for potential amendment to your motion?
You know, Katie, you kind of broke up. If you could say that again, I'm going to listen real clear.
For, for B, I would suggest that we just strike for non-residential use. So it'd say the Planning Commission may permit off-site parking if the spaces are within walking distance of the use which it serves and located on a remote site. Therefore, it would include both residential and non-residential.
Fine. Your wording is probably better, thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Story, you have seconded that motion. Are you in agreement with that amendment?
Yeah, that's acceptable.
Great, okay. There's no additional comments from the council. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Bertrand.
No.
Councilmember Botor.
Aye.
Councilmember Story.
Aye.
Councilmember Brooks.
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries four to one, thank you. We're going to move on now to the next topic within this agenda item, which is related to, specifically to the potential future village hotel site. I am, live within a certain boundary that will require me to recuse myself from this item. So I'm going to turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Brooks and virtually step out until the remaining, until this item has, has been concluded. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. We'll go ahead and move into staff's presentation for topic three, Village Hotel in Height.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Brooks. So this last topic is about the future village hotel height. As I mentioned earlier, this property is zoned within the updated zoning code to have incentives for additional height and floor area ratio if it meets certain criteria as public benefits. In reviewing the village hotel height, the Coastal Commission made some, Coastal staff made some recommendations to modify the initial language that was adopted in 2018. And their modifications are shown on the screen. Specifically, they made one change to fix, we had one of the APN numbers not included, so they've added that. Second, they, in the, the Planning Commission had had, had set the maximum height of the hotel, that it must remain below the elevation of the bluff behind the hotel. And the Coastal staff modified that to say, including, so the maximum height of the hotel and then including all rooftop architectural elements such as chimneys, cupolas, et cetera, and all mechanical appearances such as elevator shafts, HVAC units, et cetera, remain. And they also added at least 10 feet below the, the top elevation of the bluff behind the hotel. So they got much more specific in the criteria of how that would be measured. They also added the bluff, the viewpoints, that the bluff behind the hotel remained visible from, and they added the Capitola Beach, Cliff Drive, and the Capitola Wharf as a green edge and added above the visible top of hotel with existing mature trees maintained on site. When we took this to Planning Commission, again, they really wanted to allow maximum discretion for the best design in the future. And so they suggested not adding, not accepting the changes for the 10 feet, as well as not accepting the changes for the projections above the rooftop for mechanical equipment. And then further, they suggested revising the viewpoints. So Capitola Beach is much lower than the hotel site. And from that vantage point, it'd be very difficult, no matter what size building was built there, to, to maintain that visible line. The Coastal Commission staff, we've talked to them about that, and they agree with removing that suggestion of theirs for the viewpoint from the Capitola Beach. We also thought it would be, the Planning Commission suggested for the Cliff Drive viewpoint to get more specific in the description of that. So here, you're seeing the Planning Commission recommendation of crossing out Capitola Beach, getting more specific that the southern, the southern parking lot along the bluff or Cliff, of Cliff Drive. And adding, and the Capitola Wharf as a green edge above the visible top of the hotel. So, so here, I've got some visuals to show you what this means. So, sorry, there's, the Zoom information is in front of the, the language. But to the maximum height, the Planning Commission was saying to remove the 10-foot requirement. Here we have the proposal, this was the conceptual review that went before Planning Commission and City Council. I wanted to give you an idea of what the 10 feet would look like. And I think this elevation is better. So what you're seeing here is this is the line of the bluff. The top of the bluff is at 63 feet. Here is the, the height of each story. So as we go up, 10 feet below the bluff would be between the fourth and fifth story of the conceptual review that came before City Council. The proposal, as it was, the elevator was five feet below the bluff, and the fifth story was six and a half feet below the bluff, just to give you an idea. So if you were to go with the Coastal Commission recommendation, the 10-foot line would be somewhere within the fifth story. And also, none, the elevator would not be able to go beyond that. So most likely, you'd be seeing four stories with an elevator. Or, you know, that, that's what could fit within that area. Also, the Planning Commission recommended modifications to the, the viewpoints. So here's the view from the Capitola Wharf taken today. So again, as, as that parcel is built up, there would still need to be a, a green edge that's visible from the top of the hotel with existing mature trees maintained on site. And here is the view from the southern parking lot of Cliff Drive. So with that, we're looking for City Council feedback on the Planning Commission recommend, recommended changes. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Katie. So we'll go ahead and open it up to questions for councilmembers. I see that Councilmember Story's hand was up first, and then Councilmember Bertrand, you'll be next.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Brooks. Katie, I, I had a couple of questions. One, from the Coastal Commission, do you have a sense, did they explain why 10 feet? Why not five, why not 20? Because I, I was just wondering how they kind of latched on to that number. And then, on the Planning Commission's recommendation that the height should be below the top elevation of the bluff, were they meaning, was, is that implying that any architectural features could extend above the height of the bluff? And those are my two questions themselves.
Okay. So why the 10 feet was the first question? And I think in talking with the Coastal Commission, they thought it would be better to have something numerical that we could measure from and just easier guidance to follow for, as the applicant. And they, they didn't say exactly why 10 feet, but I think it's because they thought that would achieve the goal of, you know, this language of maintaining the, the green edge comes directly from our general plan. And so I think it was the intent of the Coastal Commission just to make it something that we can measure and be more quantitative rather than qualitative, is, is what I got from their feedback. The second question of the Planning Commission, did they consider these architectural elements? And I think as their, I, I believe their intent with this was that the architectural elements and HVAC systems would still have to be under that maximum height and be below the elevation of the bluff. It couldn't go beyond that. But not to specifically call it out as 10 feet and include within that 10 feet all of the mechanical and architectural elements.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Councilmember Story. Next, I see Councilmember Bertrand's hand is raised. And Councilmember Story, your hand is still raised, if you can please unraise your hand. Thank you.
Yeah, I was dealing with the same question that Sam brought up. And, you know, this discussion, I think, came forward in the general plan, and I'm glad Katie referenced that. So Katie, would you please comment on the relative height of the other buildings that are on El Domeno, Ameno, never get that name right, that are up against the bluff? They seem to be definitely way below 10 feet from the bluff top. Do you have a sense of what those distances are?
I, I don't know the distances of that. I haven't measured, but they are below the bluff, definitely. Those, those homes, you know, the way in which we measure height is from existing grades. So as you, as a, with a steep slope, you can continue to work within your height requirement. Buildings can step up the slope, so that's what you're seeing in El Camino Medio. But to estimate, I, I would say, you know, the, the closest one to the hotel seems to be the closest to the bluff. That, that gap there might be 10 feet or probably more, because it's all relative to where you're standing and looking at the image. So I, I hate to give you an inaccurate number, I'm just not sure.
No, that, that's all right. I, I'm just trying to get to where the Coastal Commission's thinking, and I, I sort of agree with Sam, what was their, excuse me, the same concern Sam had. And I, I think the whole idea of a green strip that you would see is where they're trying to, you know, go to. You know, they want to preserve that, that sense of uniformity. And I was just wondering, is that the way the Coastal Commission approaches this? As opposed to allowing something to go over the top and, you know, being completely out of place? Is that a sense of where they're coming from perhaps?
You know, in, when, when we reviewed this standard with them, they were clear that the intent was really to, to have a number there that would make it so that there's no ambiguity of what the, what the height of the hotel- that would make it so that there's no ambiguity of what the, um, what the height of the hotel could be. So it was to remove that ambiguity, which is more of a quantitative standard, to say that ten feet, rather than to maintain the green edge. Uh, that's a qualitative standard and would have to be reviewed from viewpoints. And it was really their intent just to make it, uh, easier to measure.
Okay, I, I could see that. And sometimes having a number is easier to define than the qualitative that maybe the residents would talk about when they're saying, preserve the view when we look up at the depot hill. They're not thinking of ten feet, they're probably just thinking of the green edge, and how do you get to the ten feet? You get to it by trying to preserve the green edge. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and move this to Sean for public comments. Sean?
I do see one hand raised, this is Jesse.
All right, Mr. Bustow, you have three minutes.
All right, thank you, uh, getting mean again. Um, so just wanted to comment once and stand, uh, that we were in support of planning commission's recommendation. And if I recall, you know, at that, at that, um, hearing, it was pretty much, the process is discretionary anyways. So planning commission and city council will be able to approve the right product. And, um, this objective ten feet that the coastal commission was proposing and no articulation and, and, you know, no flexibility in what could, uh, potentially go into that ten feet was, was a little unnecessary. Essentially, coastal is trying to make, uh, design the project before having a project to, to be critiqued, uh, essentially. And so just to, um, a little background to, to Councilmember Story's question, we've never, uh, proposed anything over the bluff, we've always wanted to keep it, um, un- under that bluff and be respectful of the homes above. And, um, so, uh, essentially, we, we support planning commission's recommendations and that. And, you know, we've, we just wanna have the flexibility of it, we don't wanna exceed, and we wanna be respectful of maintaining that green strip. Um, you know, we've, since our conceptual review with planning commission and council, we've reached out, you know, prior to COVID about, um, a, a lower unit count and maybe doing like a four-story product. Um, but having that flexibility, you, you're able to still have, um, rooms that go from, you know, nine feet to ten feet. You know, you, you have less rooms, but they're a higher end, and that's something that we were getting positive feedback on. So we just wanna have the, the flexibility and not really pigeonhole ourselves to, um, this arbitrary number. And so that's, uh, those are our comments on the, on the, on the height there, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bustow. Sean, do we have any other public comments via email or raised hands?
No further comments in room.
Okay, thank you, Sean. I'll go ahead and bring it back, oh.
There are no emails.
Thank you, Sean. I'll go ahead and bring it back to council deliberation. Do we have any further comments?
Oh wait, I, I did see a hand pop up at the last second, there.
Okay.
This is Keith Otto.
Mr. Otto, you have three minutes.
Yeah, so real quick, there was an email that was sent in, I don't know why you did not see it. It was from a resident there that would be adjacent to this property. Um, perhaps you can double-check that to, to capture their comments. And then from the, uh, the items that were expressed from the speaker prior, sounds like there's gonna be some, uh, relaxed language that potentially the council here is gonna vote on. And if to produce a product that all will be happy with, hopefully then, if the residents that reside adjacent to this parcel have some objection when that final product is produced and it does not align with some of the items that were discussed here, hopefully there'll be an opportunity to voice those concerns and adjust the project accordingly. Thank you.
I, I was hoping we could get clarification on, oh, Keith Otto, is that correct? For the record of public participation? Got it.
Katie?
I just wanted to clarify for the record, so it's clear the last speaker's name, and it just popped up as Keith Otto, is that correct? Sean?
Yes.
Okay, and it would be good as, when the public makes comment to introduce themselves clearly for the record.
Okay, I, I've checked our email again, I, I do not see any emails that have come in. There is a, a second hand that went up at the same time. If I can enable that person to talk, I'll, I'll keep refreshing our email. LA.
Okay, Sean, thank you, um, we see someone in the, can you put it by LA?
Hello?
Hi, thank you.
Sure, I sent an email a little bit, it just didn't make it through. Is there anything being done to address the height of the buildings, uh, over on the El Camino Medio side, which would basically be a wall, uh, facing these houses, as well as the traffic impact over there? I mean, I'm trying to picture what it would be like, I do own a home there. I'm trying to picture what it would be like, both from the bluff and from those homes. And it looks to me like pretty much just a big blank wall. And even the, uh, the two stories, uh, along, uh, the S Ma there, along Monterey would, uh, would also be, um, you know, pretty detrimental to that whole, uh, to that whole area. And I just want to voice my concerns about that.
I'm sorry, sir, we cannot hear you, and if you could please give your name?
I'm sorry?
We lost you for a second, if you can go ahead, um, Jesse, if you can give him some time back?
Yes, um, uh, addressing the height issue along El Camino Medio, both in regards to, uh, uh, blocking and being, you know, pretty unsightly on that end, as well as the traffic impact on El Camino Medio, I just want to voice, uh, my concerns about those items.
Sir, could we get your name for the record, please?
Sure, my name is Larry Abbott Ball.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Sean, do we have any emails that have come through, or anyone else with raised hands?
Um, I do not see any further raised hands. I am checking our inbox, I still do not see any messages that have come in.
Okay, thank you, Sean. So we'll go ahead and close public comment for now and bring it back to council deliberation. I see Councilmember Story's hand up, and then Councilmember Botworth. Councilmember Story?
Yeah, thank you Vice Mayor. Um, I wanted to begin by responding to, um, actually the, the last comment that was made by the speaker concerning the massing of the wall on the, uh, Medio side as well as traffic. Um, and I wanted to, um, you know, let the speaker know that when the design review came up about a year ago, um, there were, um, I think, exceptions made by council at the time about concerns about, at that time, uh, the project being kind of masked toward the El Camino Medio side and that it needs to, needed to be more balanced. So it spread out the massing over the entire project. And so, um, uh, that message has already come up and, uh, been sent back to the developer. Uh, as well as issues of traffic, these are things that are gonna be studied in the environmental impact reports. Um, and, and then those impacts will need to be mitigated. Um, so I think that anything that we do tonight, um, is not going to, uh, affect the public's ability to speak to those issues, uh, and to express their desires for maybe, um, um, changes, uh, in the project at the time. Now with that said, I'm gonna say that I, um, you know, I su- support the planning commission's approach to this, uh, of not having an arbitrary height limit. Um, just that, again, it gives us more flexibility to, uh, develop the right, uh, project taking into consideration many factors and, and height just being one of them. Um, with that said, though, I would like to, um, um, as part of my motion, recommend that we, in item A, where it says the maximum height of the hotel, and to leave in, including all rooftop architectural elements such as chimneys, cupolas, et cetera, and all mechanical per- appearances shall be, um, on those other items, remain below the elevation of the bluff. It sounds like that was everybody's intent. Um, and that's, I think that that is, um, um, you know, the top line for me uh, in terms of, um, objections going up over the top of the bluff. Um, so, um, I'd like to, uh, make that motion with that amendment to the planning commission's, uh, language.
I'll second that motion for discussion.
Okay, we have a first and a second on the table. Councilmember Botworth?
Uh, thank you Vice Mayor. Uh, I pretty much, uh, agree with everything Sam said. Uh, I, I believe that, uh, when asked, when the coastal mission was asked for a number, the number was arbitrary and ten feet was given up. Uh, the number could, as far as I'm concerned, be five, six, five feet or six feet. But I'd rather not limit it, I'd rather leave it as, as, uh, Councilmember Story suggested. This is a project that needs to come before the planning commission and the council, it'll be thoroughly vetted. And at that point, you know, the restrictions that we all wanted, I think the ones that were important was, nothing was to go above the bluff, and I think it's all about maintaining the green edge. Uh, I do have one concern in here, in, in the, in the last sentence in item B, it says, uh, uh, with existing mature trees maintained on site. I really have a problem with the eucalyptus trees that are located, uh, Katie, if you might go back to the first picture, I think that shows, kinda gets a picture of the trees, uh, adjacent to, not that one, it's, uh, there you go. The trees to the left of the picture, they're kinda by the stairway, I don't have a problem with those trees. But we've had problems with the ones behind the apartments, uh, up on Grand Avenue. And I'm specifically concerned about the trees from the borderline of the Britannia Arms to the bathrooms. So, uh, if you, if you wanna go back to the language, Katie, and yeah, I'm sorry, the, the language says, uh, with existing mature trees maintained on site. Um, I would like to make a friendly amendment to put some language in there that, uh, would allow for unsafe trees, uh, to be removed. And I don't know, Katie, what kinda language you would prefer to introduce in there. Uh, you know, I, I, I appreciate the idea of maintaining mature trees, but the proximity of those trees to, to whatever building's gonna be there is a potential hazard. And, and, uh, the fact that they're not native eucalyptus trees, I don't really have a problem with their removal. They're not part of any, uh, butterfly habitat in that location. So that would be my, uh, a friendly amendment for a, uh, to, uh, Councilmember Story.
Councilmember Story?
Yeah, that's acceptable to make.
Okay, so the motion remains. Um, I see Councilmember Bertrand's hand is raised.
Yeah, certainly echoes Sam's comments about, excuse me, Ed's comments about the trees. Um, San Francisco, we call those widow makers. They fall in winds and they have very poor roof structures. And so next to a nice new hotel, they're gonna cause a problem eventually. Hopefully not too soon, but it's gonna be a problem. Um, with Sam's change in, uh, section A, that's sort of a compromise in one sense. Um, I still like the idea of ten feet, and the reason why is we need to give a strong message to Swenson builders that the comments we received at the public hearing were taken to heart by the city council. The main comments at that hearing and subsequent discussions that I had with multiple people in the city of Capitola is that it was too massive. You know, with something like ten feet, that may mean that they'll have to redesign the top floor or eliminate it and get something that is less massive. And I think, I believe Swenson realizes that the pushback from Capitola is to get something that doesn't stand out in such a massive way. They want something that fits in a little bit better. We do want a hotel, but we want something that fits in. And something that has as many floors as they anticipate at this time. And as if we could go up to the line of the bluff, that's what we're gonna get. And it's never gonna pass, at least if we have people in city council that listen to the people of the city. So, you know, I can't support it as it is, I would prefer the ten feet to stay in there so that we can send that clear message to the Swenson builders.
Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand. Any other council comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Councilmember Story, you can move on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand.
No.
Councilmember Botworth?
Aye.
Councilmember Story?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Brooks?
Aye.
And the mayor is recused. Motion passes.
Thank you, Chloe. Okay, I believe that brings, that takes us to the end of our agenda. If Mayor Peterson would like to return to close today's meeting.
Thank you Vice Mayor Brooks. Thank you all so much for your participation this evening. Uh, thank you council members for this conversation and for staff for all the work that you've put into this. Um, again, we, we really appreciate all the, um, the comments, the public comments. This will conclude tonight's meeting, thank you so much. Take care of yourselves and take care of each other. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.